All set, Mr. Chairman?
I'm now going to call the Wednesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law Chapter, Section, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, by vote of the legislature, the order was extended to April first, twenty twenty-two. So welcome everyone, we are on hybrid today, live and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join us in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order, I'm going to call the role Commissioner Stady.
I am President.
Commissioner Collins.
President.
The chairman is here, we have a forum. I'm going to go to number three quickly, and then I'm going to ask you to take a couple of items out of order due to some guests we have here today, so. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of February second, twenty twenty-two.
I wasn't here for that one.
Mr. Chairman, any questions? It looked okay to me.
Yep, no, there.
You're okay? All my acceptance of the meeting minutes?
And I'll abstain.
Okay.
I'll second it all if they.
Yes.
Today, we have an award for the town of Millis, we have several people on our Zoom here from the town of Millis. This is one of our opera awards, so I would, if I had no objection, go to item number five, and then we're going to go to item number thirteen, which also deals with opera today. And we have our consultant and our attorney on with us on the very same subject. So if there's no objection, I'm going to go to number five, which is the granting of an award of one point five six five million to the town of Millis under our opera program. And with us from Millis is Peter Germain, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Aaron Underhill, Select Board Vice Chair, Peter Gazinski, which is, who is the town administrator?
Michael Gazinski.
Michael, I'm sorry, making him Peter today. Karen Damazo, who's our operation and support manager, and Carol Johnsons, who is Johnston, who is our finance director. I'm going to turn this over to Director Cronin, who's going to explain it, and then any questions, we'll make the reward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, before the Commissioners this afternoon is a request to fund the full amount of the ARPA award that has been allocated to the town of Millis. The town of Millis is, as you mentioned, looking to fund a ineligible ARPA project totaling one million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents. This is not the total cost of the project, as I understand it, the Angeles Water Treatment Plant and the need for the water treatment plant improvements has been enacted by the Millis Town Government, I believe, last fall to fund a more substantial investment in that product as a result of excessive levels of a so-called PFOS identified in the wells. The county is proposing to fund their share of ARPA to offset total project costs. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Millis if they want to add any additional information relative to that project.
Well, thank you, excuse me all, very much. We, at the town of Millis, really want to thank you for what you're doing. As was noted, and I do apologize, getting over a little bit of a cold. That one point five six million will go a long way to helping us, at least with our first plant. The plant costs at this point look like they're going to be approximately six million dollars. It looks like we may end up having to put in two more plants, it's possible for three, but at least two. So you can imagine every bit amount of money that we get like this is incredibly helpful to the town. So thank you all very much on that. For that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gazinski, if he has anything he'd like to say, our town administrator.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I think that was covered well. The the plant worth looking to build at the town meeting is already approved, five point six million dollars for its construction. This will certainly help fund that project, and we certainly appreciate the county authorizing the full amount, which will help us in our financial processing of the project, which we, I think we're going to be opening the bids later this week. So we're well on our way in the project, and we appreciate all the assistance from the county. So thank you.
Director Cronin?
Just one thing to add, I understand, Mike, through Carol, that the the project is going to take some time. And in terms of timing, the reason the county is proposing to agree to the full distribution of your award despite the typical fifty percent allotment is because of the imminent need of cash to fund the project on the front end, beginning in April, I believe, from your timeline that Carol shared with me. So I wanted to share with the Commissioners that this is a full award beyond the allotment, given the exigency of the condition, as well as the readiness of the project to use the county funds right up front to offset these costs.
So we haven't, if I may, we haven't done that, right, in the past, on awards yet? Like in Wellesley, Wellesley, we didn't.
Wellesley was not a full, it was not a full.
Okay.
That's correct.
So that's a courtesy to the town, I hope you appreciate that, you know, that's good.
We do appreciate it.
What's the timeframe, Peter or Mike, what's the timeframe on this project to be done?
The bids, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the bids are going to be opened, I believe, tomorrow, and we expect construction to begin as early as April.
Okay. And this is just for Millis, you're not collaborating with any of the town?
No, it's just Millis, and again, the the one point five million only represents a quarter of the cost of this project, so.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you very much, and we do appreciate the expedited manner in which you've dealt with this, very, very helpful to the town.
Glad to help.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Any other comments? I need an official motion then on that figure.
Are we voting it now or later on, we have?
No, we're going to vote it now.
We are going to vote it?
We'll vote this, and they'll get a general, our fate subsequent.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, with pleasure, it'd be my pleasure to move the approval of the ARPA grants to the town of Millis in amount of one million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars, forty-eight cents for the purpose outlined in their application and approved by our our director and submitted to us this afternoon.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more comment from the Commissioners? On the on the vote of the award to the town of Millis from our opera funds, I'm going to call the role Commissioner Stady.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes, three to zero, we're going to pass this money through. Is the check in the mail, Director Cronin?
It will be via electronic funds.
Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, the second part of this is item number thirteen, which is the report of the county director. The opera report, and we have with us.
Yes.
So staying in the same vein, I'm going to have you handle this, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The the Commissioners have been advised as a result of some recent notices from the U.S. Treasury that as of January sixth, with the final rule, that certain elements of the American Rescue Plan Act has been clarified for counties and other recipients to manage the grant. One of the areas that has caught a lot of attention is the revenue replacement option, revenue loss option. Over the last week or two, the county has informed the various cities and towns how it plans to distribute so-called ten million dollar benefit that has emerged from this clarification. And certain communities have reached out back to us, expressing their difficulty managing their expectations of the grant and their internal needs as a result of these conditions. We took these steps initially based on feedback from Clifton Larson Allen. This afternoon, Commissioners joining us is Hannah York from Clifton Larson, as well as Matt Page from Metz Levin. Both have been instrumental, helping me and the county understand what this massive four hundred page rule means. Well, last week and through the conversations with Commissioner Stady and others, we've taken steps to have a second view of the rule and an opinion related to it to ensure that we're following the intention of the federal treasury to the law, to the to the letter, I should say, and also to make sure that our communities hear the work that we're trying to accomplish to ensure a good faith and management of the grant. I've asked Matt and Hannah to join us in the event that either any of the Commissioners have any questions about this. But one of the items that has clearly surfaced in one of our larger towns that is very negatively impacted, I believe, could result in the need for us to ask for assistance from the federal level, maybe in the form of a waiver on these conditions. But clearly, given the structure of the of the final rule and the language, the county's ability to rectify or remedy the cause that this community is dealing with right now is is not within our reach. So with your consensus and your thoughts today, I'll take guidance to perhaps draft a letter using the assistance of Matt and Hannah to send along through our congressional delegation to the U.S. Treasury to ask for relief. But I thought it was important today to let you know that as the county continues to manage this grant, we will encounter these kind of issues. But this one is pretty seismic, and it does have a demonstrable and negative effect on many of the communities, and it's all unintentional. This was not meant to be punitive, but I hear these complaints, and I just wanted to let the Commissioners know, our our team hears them almost daily, right, Hannah? And we want to make sure that we're working affirmatively in your interest and the community's interest to try to take some change forward. So I'll leave it to you to ask any questions, our our experts are here to address any questions you might have on the revenue replacement option and the next step to perhaps prepare this letter to our congressional partners and ultimately the U.S. Treasury.
Okay, thank you. I don't know whether you want to go right to Commissioners or, sure, go ahead, Commissioner Stady.
I'm just, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for you. Where I've read different things about it, and of course, we know that the federal government does this, I guess, as a a practice, they change things on the go, and we have to kind of get used to it. But I'm trying to understand it better in terms of what what was the public policy served by changing it in terms of making that recent advisory, which, as Director Cronin has indicated, and I know Chairman Shay and I received calls directly from Braintree, they were very upset, this puts the town of Braintree in a very negative position through no fault of ours, and yet we are on the hook here because we're the administrator of the fund. So what's what's the purpose behind that, if you could explain it? And then the second thing, if I could, real quick, the way I read it, it seems that the effective date, I believe, is at April fourth. So what is the problem in dispersing funds to Braintree now before that effective date? I wanted to get an answer on that, thank you.
This is Matt Page from Metz, I'll take a first crack at that, and then I'm sure Hannah will have something to add as well. I would not characterize what we're discussing here as necessarily a change. I don't think that there was any intent on the Treasury's part to take an existing clearly defined rule and change it to something different. I think that the 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 rule regarding transfers of the county's ARPA funds to sub recipients, to to different cities and towns within the county, included some language that was not completely clear in the interim final rule. And that that language was clarified somewhat in the final rule, so I would put it more in the sense of clarification. And I would also add that it would have been even more convenient if there were more clarification. But our best reading of the current rule is that the way that you measure the amount of a grant is by the amount of revenue loss that's experienced by the actual grant recipient. And in this case, for this grant, the county is the grant recipient. And so we, when you pass on some of that funding, if you're going to pass it on for the purpose of revenue replacement, you need to pass it on within the allowable amount at the county level. And that's, you know, that's, I don't, I think that's not what was expected, that was not crystal clear in the interim final rule stage. And the other portions, the much more sizable portions of these rules that talk about how revenue replacement works in general, separate and aside from the ability to transfer some of these funds to others for spending, don't mention this at all, and go into great detail about how recipients would measure their revenue loss and therefore justify the ability to spend for revenue replacement. So I think, you know, the bottom line, I think, I would put this in the in the manner of clarification, not change. In terms of policy, you know, I think that I would suspect that this was not completely intentional, that that what we're experiencing here was not completely intentional, that. But I think the larger policy is that the Treasury doesn't want to set a set of rules for a grant and then allow the person who receives the grant to transfer those funds to someone else in a way that expands and opens the door to use that was not not allowed at the first level. And so, you know, in this case, that feels, I think, to to some of your cities and towns like they're being hampered or constrained, and and certainly as measured against their expectations, that's correct. But if you think about, you know, the federal government, in this particular case with this grant, granted the money to the county. And so the, you know, what we're talking about here is honoring what what has been clarified in the final rule constraining the the uses of funds to those that are justified at the county level. Even though you have the ability to pass it on to others to do the spending, the measurement is at the county level. And I don't know if you have more follow up on that, or if Hannah wants to jump in and add, I think, from her perspective as well.
Yeah, Matt, I think that was explained really well, and I think just to add to it is the rules about the sub recipient and the use restrictions by the sub recipients, we have to also remember those weren't written for just municipal sub recipients, that that same language is covering whether it's a private company and not-for-profit, a governmental entity, it's the same rules across the board. So when they write that, what are the sub recipients able to spend it on? You know, and and not, you know, making sure it's it's a use that's eligible by the county. You know, you may be passed these funds, while in this case, for you guys, you're doing it to cities and towns, others may be passing it on to private companies or not-for-profits, and allowing them to use that for revenue loss also wouldn't make sense. It didn't differentiate between the governmental and the non-governmental sub recipients. So I think that's part of the issue, too. As far as the date goes, that date is for specific changes in allowable use. And there, so this, as Matt said, this is, we're looking at this not as a change in allowable use, but a clarification from prior language. And they also give the, in those changes, and in reality, there weren't really any pullback changes. There was the clarification of this, but in all the other categories, all the changes that were made were actually to the benefit of the benefit of the recipient. And so they actually allow you to accept the changes early and not have to wait till April first. So there's a little confusion with those dates and what the dates are intending to be, but they said for the clarification purposes, those are immediate as soon as it came out, which was on, I believe, January seventh. So we now have that understanding, we have to follow the follow the rules as written. And just as a little bit of prior history, too, when the interim final rule came out six months ago, we did submit questions to the Treasury, asking them to clarify some of the language, you know, and and specific questions, and the answers were not answers. You know, basically saying, read the guidance, and we're like, you know, we did. We have also resubmitted a question for even further clarification since the final rule came out, as of yet haven't heard anything. But barring some other information coming out that gets even more clarification on this, this is our current understanding of what the county is ultimately responsible for. You know, and we want to make sure that the county is, that we're protecting the county and not, you know, making recommendations that may cause issues for you to have growth with the with the Treasury.
If I take that reasoning further, if the Treasury has further clarification, which it could, the rules could change again. And then the problem I have is that, what if, so let's say, let's assume Braintree or Norwood or Canton or someone else had applied back in October, and we had given out a large amount of money, and then they come up with this rule, what happens then? We have to go after those towns and get the money back? Or do we just say at that time, at that place, that's okay? That's the problem with you changing, I understand you're using the word clarification rather than changing, to me, it's a semantic argument. But at what point do we say, here's the rules now, this is it? You know, it just doesn't seem fair to our towns, and it doesn't seem fair to us as a municipal entity to have the rules changed. That's all I'm saying, and maybe it's not your fault, I'm not angry with you, I'm not, you're doing your job, so don't don't mistake my somewhat disturbance with this. My problem is with the federal government, and I think on that, I think we really should, I would urge the Chair and my colleagues to send a letter. And regardless of what you may have heard or said, I'd like to, for the record, have a letter sent to our congressional delegation and have the other counties on record, too. This is not fair, it's just not fair. It's just you can't change the rules or explain something and say, well, now we're going to do it this way. And I think the point, too, is Director Cronin pointed out, it's because Norfolk County is in great shape. If we had a loss in excess of ten million, we perhaps could have got around it, but because we had a good year, thanks to Potsie, the Register of Seats, and others, we're not able to get around it that way. So it doesn't, we're going to catch twenty-two here. So thank you for your input, I'm not disturbed at all with Hannah and Matt, I understand your jobs. I'm just disturbed with the fact that, you know, we had a town that literally, this is the real world, they were upset, and they're very upset. They're counting on their money, and they're looking for that money, and if they don't get it, they're looking at layoffs, these are real situations. These are real people, we're going to be out of jobs now, and it doesn't seem fair, that's all. So I'd like to do something about it, if I could, I think we all do, hopefully we can get, we can have a letter.
That's the purpose of this this discussion.
Yeah.
We're we're reaching out everywhere we can.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure it's a change, though, I always get hooked up on this word change. It could be interpretation, day one with all our meetings, I mean, this was so new to everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
That, and when you're dealing with Uncle Sam, which we have, you know, every reason to be faithful and everything, we are, and it 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 gets, it gets ominous, and it obviously got clouded. Unintended consequence is is a way to describe it, and whatever we can do to make it better, I think we're committed to doing.
Well, I think it's not, and not just, as you know, I think, you know, not just Braintree, Mr. Chairman, Norwood's upset, other towns have expressed their concern. So I think it behooves us to at least let the congressional delegation know there's a problem, alert them to it, and see what they can do. And if they can't do anything, okay, we try, but at least let them know this is a situation, that's all, at the least.
Any other questions for? Madam?
No, I strictly want to make them available directly to you, I've been working daily with these folks, and I have to sing their praises, their 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 accessibility, their thoroughness is 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 quite good. I did invite Powers and Sullivan to join us, Renee's on vacation this week, but we'll we'll read her into this when she returns next week. But as Commissioner Stady said, we're all in this together, nobody's trying to create rules that are detrimental to the outcome. But clearly, the the impact here is being, is resonating, and I think the county has a position to notify our congressional delegation where we stand on this and what we'd like to see changed as soon as possible.
Yeah. I think that's.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's a consensus with the Commission, I'll be happy to draft a letter from you folks.
Well, I I I think so, I mean, we got, we got another letter, it's the town of Walpole, that's a whole other subject. But yes, I think so, I mean, I mean, what do you, you don't want to wait any longer, I mean, I don't know who else we can ask.
No, because.
We talked to this.
I think I think for us, even for the record, to have a letter on record to show that we're doing all we can, I think, there might be other congressional, like Congressman Austin Kloss hasn't been reached out on this at all, and he should be contacted, because he does represent Sharon.
We'll reach Congressman Austin Kloss, Congresswoman Presley, who I believe represents two communities in Norfolk and Congressman Lynch. Following this, I will alert the other counties, Tom O'Brien and the others are watching this.
Right.
Hannah, have you seen this issue resonate in any of the other counties yet?
Oh, so as of right now, we haven't had, we hadn't approved any applications through the revenue loss, so we haven't had, so there hasn't been an issue, thankfully, as as you were mentioning, that if if this had already been approved prior, this final rule comes out. And I just wanted to do a little clarification on that, the Treasury did state in there that if if clarification changes of language changes things, then if you used your best faith estimate prior to the final rule coming out, they would hold the recipient harmless, in essence, they wouldn't hit you with the penalties. So they did put that language in there, so I just wanted to address that that comment. However, that doesn't, you know, once the final rule came out, that goes away, right? So because now we have that clarified language. But yeah, as of yet, thankfully, for none of the counties that we have that had actually sent any of that out, because everybody was still in the planning phase.
Thank you, Hannah, so if there's a consensus, I'll draft something.
I would say absolutely, if you could have it drafted for next week's meeting, and my conversations will have been with Congressman Lynch last weekend, this week, he does have a grasp of it, he knew about it. Not particularly from from Norfolk County towns, but in general, it had been discussed, and, you know, he said whatever he had to do, but it would be, you know, you're talking about a federal mandate. It's even over, not over his head, and but it's, you know, but he said, I I've talked to the people that explained it, he understood it, which was very helpful, because.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, given the timeline that we're under, I know one community is urgently looking for relief, and if it's possible, I'd like your permission to stamp the letter. Once I work individually with each of you to make sure the letter and its contents are acceptable, I'll also work with Matt and Hannah to make sure the message is true and correct. I'd like to try to get it out this Friday.
Well, it's better than next Wednesday, if you can do it, I, we're all available anyway, to look at.
If that's fine with you, I will work independently to you to make sure the memo is accurate.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You're good?
Yeah, all right, that's great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, Matt.
We'll talk soon.
Thank you, nice to see you. Okay, this concludes the matter of, of course, the Mills Award and the opera discussion, which we'll return to at a later date. We have to, next item, public comment, item number four. Obviously, we have some public comment today, you have, other than the people that are here, have you haven't heard from anyone else, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to open the public comment up to anyone that has any public comment. Kevin, first in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Kevin Fowlen, I'm the president of the Norfolk County Employees Union, Local two four one seven. I represent the registry employees, the maintenance employees, and the engineering employees. I come today before you to talk about pandemic language. I have a prepared statement I just would like to just read out of, and then I'll provide it to each Commissioners, if that's okay. Pandemic pay and health and safety memorandum of understanding has been given to most state employees, union cities, I'm sorry, to most employee unions, cities and towns in Norfolk County months ago. It is not a new idea, but a common practice to show support for its employees. Formerly as president of Local two four one seven, I would like to request the Norfolk County Commissioners to meet with us from the registry, maintenance, and engineer bargaining groups to have a long overdue memorandum of understanding for issues of the current COVID nineteen pandemic to include health and safety and COVID nineteen pay. I fully understand the frustration of all my members of working during the pandemic with no protection and all the unknowns that surround COVID nineteen. Working for Norfolk County Maintenance Department, we are essential. We have always cleaned up after viruses, MRSA, AIDS, sewage, and other health threatening matters. From the very start of the pandemic, your maintenance department has been in the front lines, keeping the buildings safe. The pandemic has added extra work to our normal workload and hazardous work conditions. Nothing to date has reached a level like COVID nineteen. I understand this is to be done by having a simple meeting with us and drafting up a memorandum of understanding to include pandemic pay and have the language of health and safety for your employees. The pandemic was not in any of our current contract agreements from three years ago, and it should not be done during regular contract negotiations. We would like the same consideration as our union brothers and sisters that work for the state, cities, and town governments in Norfolk County and the Commonwealth. I have two questions here for the Commissioners. Has Norfolk County received or will receive any state or federal funds for the pandemic? That's question number one. Question number two is, my membership would like to know where each Commissioner stands on the memorandum of understanding to include language for health, safety, and the pandemic pay. We're asking if you would. on the memorandum of understanding to include language for health, safety, and the pandemic pay. We're asking if you would support it. I have included with this, the only reason why I did these two was because primarily Norfolk County, local six represents trial court employees. I have their memorandum of understanding right here, which included language and of course, COVID-19 pay. I've also included another union within the state, which would be, let me see, I got it right here. So there's two of them here. I also know that I have in that, although I haven't looked up maybe hundreds that were within the state. I know like the chairman will know that in the city of Quincy, they have adopted pandemic pay. I know I haven't looked up everybody's city like Milton and Canton, but I'm sure this is very common practice. I would like to end on a note to thank my fellow members here. I was just elected the president on Monday night. And I know that myself working through the pandemic as well as our members, I first like to say openly and publicly to my members in the registry deeds, I was refinancing my house in the very start of the pandemic. And the only way this will go through, they said, my mortgage person said, is if the registry deeds remains open. Being an employee for the county for many years, I never really fully understood what the registry deed does for the citizens of Norfolk County. In this case, it provided me refinancing my mortgage at a very low rate and allowed me funds to keep paying my mortgages in the future. So thank you for my registry employees. I think this is important to realize that we provide essential services in Norfolk County. I also believe that Norfolk County is the leader in the state for not only battling COVID-19, but continuing to do so. So I thank the county commissioners for giving me a chance to speak and I will give you my information to the chairman, if that's all right.
Sure. Yeah, I would like it and I will take that as an official.
Thank you.
From, if 2417 is the right.
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that recently similar requests and process have gone through with the teachers at the agricultural school?
For what I understand, unions have talked and I believe they have a memorandum of understanding, which they provided to us.
Well, we voted for last week or the week before.
Right.
After.
And we're, we're excited to see that.
Okay.
For that, for the commissioners to move forward in helping teachers' union.
I'd like to say everything's different, but I mean, I think we demonstrated that, you know, we, our support and we. I'm sorry, Director Cronin.
With respect to the dialogue, I just wanted to remind the commissioners, this is a public comment period. The, the item is not on the agenda for in-depth discussion. The boundaries are separate.
All right, the chairman will keep his mouth shut then, but I, we're looking for official, official ask, I mean. Who do we bargain with, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm the president of the union.
That's, that's what, okay. I'm not saying, when the latest mail last week, I'm not saying they weren't needed.
Well, they are the public. I encourage them to.
We've had a lot of discussion with our legal counsel and we've been through it with the school very recently. But, well, it's three, it can't be more than three weeks old.
I think we can say though, in terms of the confines of this hearing, in terms of what we're allowed to say, what we said last week, which was that, please bring it to us as a formal request, in terms of something to be bought.
I'll take this as the formal request.
And that's all we really should say. Well, really, it's not really proper for us to say where we stand, what we want to do. That would be improper. Where it's going to be negotiated. So I think you've got, you've done what you're supposed to do. Good job. You have it now. Ball's in our court. Now it's time for us to respond. And that's all we ask you to do. That's all. That's all. It's fair. That's all we ask you to do. Now we can negotiate, you know, so. To say anything else, really, you can't because it's under the confines of collective bargaining. Like saying to a teacher, how much do you want to raise the, if they were to raise, sure. There goes that. Can't really say anything, but you know, you understand.
Okay. Anything, anything else on this subject?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, considering that we're all public employees here, I mean, we're public employees. And if you ever wondered how I got the memorandum of understanding from the other unions, because they're public. And I think too, as, as normally, I know, I don't know if everyone's an attorney, everyone's a politician, commissioner, or registered deeds, or whoever who.
I'm, I'm a minority here. I'm not an attorney.
I didn't know that. But I know you had a law.
Retired public employee.
That's, that's a good thing. But I like to first say though, that for me is even as, as I see, I got my members here today. I guess we're just looking for some to say, we, we're looking for your support to represent us as far as understanding what COVID-19 and the impact it's done on our families and what we hear as coworkers, how we have to work with each other. It's been a huge impact. It wasn't from three years ago. We would like this going because when you see other unions within the state have already adopted and actually have gotten paid and have language that, that helped to do the pandemic, have already done it. We're behind the eight ball here. This should have been done like six months ago. And that's one of my new things as president is I'm trying to catch up with pandemic as we all are. And that's where I want to leave it then. So we look forward to sitting at the table and we hope for your support in the future. Thank you very much for letting us speak.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairperson, Linda Austin, Connor Holbrook, Registry Recorder, come back. Good to be with you all.
Yes, Linda.
Have the funds physically arrived here in Norfolk County would be my first question. And if they have or when they do, is it the three commissioners who will determine the effectiveness of how to spend?
Okay, that's a good question. You asked me about, have the funds physically arrived yet? The award, the federal government sends down this block of money to the counties. I don't want to complain the whole thing, but I'm, I'm happy you all sat through the Milis Award because it's a perfect example. There is a whole process which cities and towns apply for the money up to their allotment, which is based on population. We are six or seven grants into it. Milton's gotten money, Wellesley's gotten money, Dover got money. Bellingham got money and Milis has gotten money. They go through a whole process where the lawyer you saw here and his associates, the accounting firm you saw here, they look at all the rules and regulations, they, with John, they promenade and, and listen to what everyone has to say. You meet the terms and conditions. It then comes to us. And if all the eyes, dots, the eyes and everything, then we make these awards. I am aware that the city of Quincy paid for a bonus out of Opera money. I'm also aware the city of Methuen paid it out of another fund and it wasn't approved. They had to get it back. That's, that's, that's a problem because they didn't go through proper channels. Now, whether Opera money, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, you can pay a bonus out of it. This board tells you, then we have to vote on it. I can imagine if Quincy went through, perhaps this would go through. But in the end, but it isn't like we're sitting on this pot of money and that we're going to give this, you know, because it's got to be bargained, it's got to be asked for, and then we'll go from there. As for last year's money, the first money we got was called the CARES Act. And it was not money in the CARES Act to give public employees bonuses. Can't give it for raises. You can't give it for pension purposes. There's all kinds of rules. This is so new. And there's so much, well, you can see there's, there's, there's some of the towns that think it can be used for debt, payback money you lost in the past years or two, obviously. And we're disappointed. It can't be at this point. But it can be used for water, for sewer. And you know, the question's going to be asked about a pandemic pay. I don't, I don't, the word bonus doesn't do me a lot of, I think pandemic pays a better way.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not supposed to be even going this far.
Yeah.
And our lawyer, our labor lawyer is not here today, but I, we've had many conversations with her.
Thank you.
And now I will officially transmit this to her this week. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Other than it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other public comment?
We'll be in touch.
Okay. We're going to be in a one-minute recess and then we're going to go right to the rest of the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
I did too. I was stuck for like 25 minutes.
It just wasn't moving.
Did you go right through in the north?
I did, but I just, I stuck, stuck it out, but they opened the street up. They had a street opening. I didn't know what was going on.
I turned it off.
It was brutal. I think I stopped going down to University Avenue. You never get the layers that way, you know?
Lot luck that way.
Because no, it's just too risky, you know?
Yeah, I don't trust no one anymore.
Yeah, it's same here.
Commissioner Stady, for the benefit, for your benefit, as we get to the personnel matters for consideration, we won't make you read every single one.
Oh.
If you want to make a motion to approve of the listed notice minimum wage increase for the seasonal employees listed, we'll take that as a batch vote.
I called, if you don't know, call mine. I called Carlton Minor about that. It seemed like an excessive number of people for such a small course.
It's, it's basically, they're looking at all the open contract or seasonal employees.
Yeah.
They don't know who's going to come back. So they're just setting this up too.
And he also said he breaks it into Pro Shop, Rangers, Meet and Things like that. It's a pretty long list there. Lots of people getting paid. They don't get benefits, do they? These people here?
No, 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 no one on that list.
Okay.
Okay, we're back on the record. Number six in our regularly scheduled meeting on February 9th. Old business.
Hey, John.
Director Cronin, we have any old business?
No, sir.
Okay. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration. We have one at the agricultural school and several, several at the Wallace and Recreation Facility. I want to welcome Double John is here. Superintendent Martin and John Wallace, Business Manager of the Agricultural School. So welcome, gentlemen, and Commissioner Stady, motion on personnel matters.
For you, Mr. Chairman, Agricultural High School, a notice of change of address. I moved Angela J. Nichols to Medway, Mass. Effective February 3rd.
Second.
Motion made and seconded relative to a change of address for Angela Nichols at the Agricultural School. Is a vote. Next.
The next group, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reference on the submitted document presented to us at this meeting. There's a pretty long list of people to be employed at the Wallace and Recreation Facility. They will be getting minimum wage increase and they're seasonal employees, I believe.
Thirty-four, correct.
I believe they are.
They're all seasonal employees. And the request is to bring them up to the minimum flat rate of 14 dollars and 25 cents.
When we, when we go back to golf season, which is in March.
I see. So they're all going to be raised up to the rate of 14.25 and it'll be effective date of March 1st. And rather than reading some 50 odd names, I'll just reference the move that the approval be referenced to the sheet presented to us at our meeting with the said names.
Second.
Motion being seconded to grant the increase of the minimum wage for our part-time employees at the Wallace and Recreation Facility commencing March 1st, 2022. All in favor? It is a vote. Thank you very much. That concludes that. A payroll and expense warrant for approval.
Right, I have that. I'll move the following for approval for the warrant list of February 9th. First, 22-32 payroll of the county in the amount of $137,874.71. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next.
Next, 22-32 payroll of the school. I'll move the amount $332,273.43. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
Third, I'll move 21-5, the Norfolk County Agricultural High School renovation loan interest. Move approval of $29,525. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
And fourth, I'll move approval 2-2-22, expenses at the county, $77,106.10. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Quick question. I did not see Opera on here. We've had that in the past.
We did, we did Opera when.
I didn't, last time we had a meeting, the Opera grant was on there. I didn't see it on here.
That's fine. We've already made the motion on it earlier.
We did. Okay.
Okay. Number nine, December trial balances for approval. In your pack dated December 31st, so the trial balance is looks like this. Director Cronin, is it, did you jump over here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we proceed, Michelle Lederbini just texted me and she shared a point about benefits for seasonal employees. She wanted to clarify that seasonal employees get one hour of accrued sick time for every 30 hours worked, according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 149, Section 148(c).
Just they're not members of retirement. They're not.
That is the only benefit that's.
That's correct. Okay. They don't get blue pro, they don't get medical.
Regarding the trial balance provided by the treasurer, this is as of December 31st, 2021. Perfect time to take a mid-year review of the county's financial position, especially as it relates to revenue. I want to just call attention to the commissioners to note that under our general fund revenues, the major categories of revenue, including registry fees, deeds excise, and also courthouse rental, they're all on target or above. Specifically, the registry fees are trending strong, above the projected 2.5 million. Additionally, the registry deeds excise. The deeds excise is projected at 4.2 and it's at 2.8 half per year. So our revenue collections are coming in above benchmark, which is good. You cannot state that will exceed that projected revenue because we still have six months to go and there are some signs in the market. I think we've talked about the fact that there may be some rate changes coming up, which would slow the rate of deeds activity. So we'll keep an eye on it, but as of the end of December, things look very favorable overall. So I just wanted to let you know, I did speak to the treasurer about this and we agreed we're in good shape. So.
Are we on the same page, if I may? Are we on the same pace as we were last year? Or a little bit down? Okay. But not bad.
Last year's were historic.
Good. Understood.
Yeah, this, this year it looks favorable.
Okay, so it's favorable. That's good news. Okay, we'll take that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions at all on the trial balances dated 12/31/21?
And I do know Joe Giore is on the line if you wanted to.
Do we need a board's approval of that?
We just take it under advisement.
Joe, do we need a vote on the trial balance?
Don't do that, do we?
Yeah, I don't think you typically mean, oh, you just have to accept the trial balance.
Correct. Accept is what we do. Okay, let's have a motion to accept the trial balance. Ask for it.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We had one, we had no bid openings at 1:30. We have no contract awards today. Next item, number 12. In your package, gentlemen, is a response to the Walpole Selectwood letter to us relative to county property and the solar project. I would like and expect today, because this is, we've been looking at this letter not a long time, but a couple of days. I'm trying to get this out this week. If you could please look at it and tell us what you think and let Director Cronin know. We, this letter is written with some longstanding history here. It's, it's dated February 9th, addressed to Mark Gallivan, who is the chair, and we spent some time with our legal counsel writing this. So I'd like to get your thoughts on it and see if we can't get it out of here today or tomorrow, or Friday.
I think, Mr. Chairman, of course, I think the letter is well-written and edited. I gave Director Cronin some thoughts I had in terms of some of the requests of Walpole concerning open space and discussions on restrictions and things like that, which I'm, I'm open to. But I think the key thing we're trying to stress to them is that really, you can't put the cart before the horse. We kind of, kind of, you know, these things come after. We get to that hearing stage if they're not interested in buying the land, right? That's the number one.
Well, this is a direct result of Jim Johnson's letter to us of January 28th.
I see.
And we all looked at it.
Yeah. I, I, I'm trying, I'm finally, if you want to go forward.
I am too.
I thought there were two good points made.
Again, with Director Cronin this morning, but if you, if you want, I want a last look, so to speak, because I don't want to send them. To our, you know, to apply the college of the agricultural school's letter. What do you think, Director, Commissioner Collins?
I'm fine with it. Chairman, if I may, I request a motion to approve the letter in its current version. We'll secure this and with your permission, use your stamps to endorse it. We'll secure this and with your permission, use your stamps to endorse it. I'll make that on this date.
Motion made and seconded to, uh, reply to the chair of the Norfolk County, uh, to the chair of the Walpole Board of Selectmen, Mark Galivan, relative to a letter received from us, uh, from the Town Administrator dated January twenty-eighth, subject being solar at the school. All in favor?
Aye.
Get that out of here today. There's a copy for this one.
I see the original letter, Chuck.
Yeah, you got it.
Did I see the original letter already?
Yeah.
I think I'll get that.
Okay, next item. It's a Walpole, some. Number fourteen. Report on COVID response. Director Cronin.
Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, the only item here I have before you is consideration of the mask wearing policy. As you know, on December twelfth, first I believe was the commission voted to require mask wearing in all county buildings. Um, well, I think most people are compliant with it day to day. Um, I just wanted to report today, we're observing that certain other public institutions are revisiting the policy, uh, both educational and non-educational. Um, it to your, to the degree that you're interested in revisiting the policy, um, along this line, I'll take your guide. Uh, there is no urgent need to release that requirement at this time, but I think as we trend towards, um, more favorable case, um, tracking data and more definitely more seasonal, uh, whether we can expect to see more, um, more, uh, favorable, uh, public health information. So uh, it's just an item that I'd like to place a point to keep an eye on over the next couple of weeks as other public institutions, um, release or change their orders. That's all. No action required today.
Yeah, the board of health just issued the release of the mandate effective Monday for public buildings. They were there first. So I mean, there's this, geez, I'm not saying we want to do it now. I don't want, but the trending is.
Which board of health?
The Kent Board of Health. They just listed them in.
I think.
And they wished it did too the other day, didn't they?
I don't think we were going by any particular city or town, but we were working.
No, we just observed.
The town of Dedham and observed what they've been doing because so many of our employees are housed here.
Right.
That was in the past. I'm not, that's not, I ain't glad either, but we gotta, I'm, I'm going to call on Superintendent Martin too because.
Just a piece of information, uh, Chairman. The Commissioner of Education, uh, released a statement today which will sunset the mask mandate in schools on February twenty-eighth.
Okay, I was going to say much first.
Very close.
Okay, yeah. I can probably look around that date, last one, maybe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Number fifteen, announcement of use. Lose notice on vacation time to departments. Director Cronin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just simply to alert the commissioners that, uh, tomorrow a letter will go out to every department head associated with a list of employees, um, who have used lose time as calculated by our, um, time and attendance tracking system. This is in concert with the notice that this public body had back in January to discuss the, um, pending, um, relief that was offered in FY twenty-one into FY twenty-two of employees. The expectation is they would reduce or bring their balances down to that which is allowable under our, um, handbook, Personnel Bylaw. Um, this would not affect, uh, individuals who have other benefits as described in, like the bargaining agreements, and I believe that covers the registry mostly and the schools, obviously. So we'll be looking to send those letters up to the department heads. So individual employees know how much they need to reuse before they lose at the end of fiscal year twenty-two. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sure there'll be more to be heard in that period of session. Number sixteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very briefly, the county is closing in on its final quote for security improvements of the Walston, uh, Recreation Facility. Uh, we have secured three different quotes, but the first one was, uh, not consistent with our overall goal of providing, uh, updated, uh, camera, uh, survey, uh, surveillance as well as a service to maintain a, uh, security, um, taping of those images for thirty days. So we're hoping to have something um, in place within the next week or so to, um, move forward on installing an improved security system at the golf course. Uh, earlier this week, myself, John McGowan, our facility manager director and Michelle Labadini, I'm the candidate for, uh, facility maintenance. Um, he was favorably recommended to go into background, uh, and direct testing. So we're going to hopefully have yet another hire on board. Uh, for the commissioner's benefit, that will lead, um, that department with two openings. One is a budgeted senior building custodian. And the other is a vacancy caused by retirement back in December. Uh, we were looking to keep that vacancy of the retiree, uh, present until the value of his payout was covered. I believe that comes up in March or April. So we'll be tracking those additional two, uh, vacancies, but this additional hire should approve, uh, be productive, will backfill a vacancy created in Quincy District Court. Um, regarding the collective bargaining, uh, status, uh, early this morning, I notified labor council as a result of the comments of the commissioners previously of the interest in, in introducing pandemic pay benefits to the negotiation table. Uh, that notice was sent to Michelle Labadini, excuse me, Michelle McMelty, uh, with the hope that we will begin our negotiations within the week, next week or two. We had a targeted.
Please forward that and forward those letters from, from Kevin Fulham so that we can. I mean, I'm willing to, I think we accepted that and I think we should as a, the first offer. Um, and I don't want to say anything else. I mean, I, I, what other people do, other people do, but you know, it's a big discussion, but we have, we have, we have a, we have a, a structure set up to, to answer all the stuff, introduce it to it and get going. That's all.
And the last item, Mr. Chairman, just an announcement that I have a planned vacation, um, on from May nineteenth through May twenty-ninth. This year.
And director, assistant director, I thought they will be here that week.
Yes, sir.
Have a nice vacation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, last item is any items not necessarily on the agenda or any emergency items. Before we adjourn, I want to tell you, uh, we have a joint meeting, uh, with the school board and then a school board meeting today, uh, that we're going to be zooming and hybrid and zoning. So we're only halfway home here today.
Mm-hmm.
The next, the rest of subjects after adjournment will be all school related though. Last call. Okay, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn and then we.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back on the joint meeting at two fifteen with the Norfolk County Agricultural School Board and the county commissioners. This meeting is concluded. Thank you very much.